I need to get some help getting them printed, so I don't know if Todd can help or who, but. Let's uh. Let's put our heads together and figure it out. Once it's designed, make sure John likes it, get it um. You know, two to five hundred of them printed and get them out testing it.
Sounds good.
I have a lot to work on around that, like I'm gonna try to partner with Bar West and uh. Have an official understanding, so. Oh, cool.
Yep, I'm making it right now, so.
Awesome, can't wait. I like that AI gets us a head start.
Yeah, it's so helpful to just be like, oh, yeah, just do this. I can copy that just fine versus like trying to think of something and work it through a bunch of times.
For sure. I have a prompt I'll send you too for if you're ever creating a group chat profile.
Uh huh.
Um, photo, I like this prompt because. And I'm sure like you're a designer, so you know what to say and you've used enough AI to where you're not probably worried about this, but. I like it because it asks me a series of questions or there are a series of questions you can answer. Like what you want the tone to be, the color palette, the visual style, any symbols or imagery, blah, blah, blah. And uh. I got, I got it because one day it like naturally asked me those questions and then I answered all of them. And I realized that by answering those four or five questions, I can get pretty much anything I want made and it lands for our app, so.
That's awesome.
Yeah, I can't wait until, I think ChatGPT is, is obviously an amazing tool. I can't wait till it hits the. Level where we can easy, where it's easier to tear prompts between teams that are working on the same stuff and transfer the knowledge of the brand back and forth between. Um, our ChatGPTs because I've trained it, the one I work with, I've trained it a lot on what Circles is. And I think you probably have too because you've been using it for just as long.
Yeah. Yeah, I get accused of using AI too much, but I mean. Why try to spend so much time trying to think of things to eat when I could just be like, hey, here's what's in my fridge, give me some ideas, you know? Every little thing could just be.
No, there's no such, there is no such thing because it's going to. Get better from here and be even more in our lives over the next couple of years, like it, there's no. Hiding from it, you may as well get used to it and be.
I feel like it's the internet, like every, everyone's gonna have to learn to use the internet. I think everyone's just gonna have to learn how to use AI. I think it's just. Another.
There's no getting rapid.
Yeah.
You just have to make sure you're putting your personal touch on everything still because if you don't, it definitely.
Reasons.
Yeah.
And it's pretty obvious at this point now that I've used AI so much of being like, oh yeah, that was obviously written by AI and they didn't change anything at all.
Yeah. Hundred percent. Zane will do that. Sometimes we'll be talking to him and he'll. Respond to us and it's just like, that just wasn't you.
Yeah, I've noticed that too.
Well, good morning, everyone.
Hello.
Morning.
Morning.
Todd, how hard do you think it would be to get a meeting with Trevor?
Um. I think uh, I don't, well, it'll be challenging for sure. Um, what would be the uh?
Want to do uh. A more official partnership with him. Got a couple of his properties, specifically Bar West and around this uh. They, right now, they take a bunch of photos and they drop them in a Google Drive for everybody to jump into.
Okay.
And we want to have them, uh, we want to partner with them around the photos and get them into circles. And uh, get people tagged in photos and have text messages go out telling people their photos are in the app. And uh, and give them, him and Nino's probably um, some incentive to. Be really committed to the project because we're finally at a point now where. It's very clear that it's gonna deliver value to his industry.
Yeah.
To his bar and, you know, and, and it's also clear like the project has serious legs and is getting. Some traction, so it's not gonna feel like they're, you know, getting in on something super, 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 super early.
Right.
Where it's gonna take us years to get to the goal.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I can reach out to him and, and let him know that we wanna. Continue to promote um, his businesses and circles and would like. Some, a little bit of help from him.
Cool, I'll connect with you and share a little more on the side and we'll.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Chantel, have you um? Talked with Ian at all about? Using the Trello board?
Yeah, we talked about it yesterday.
Okay, cool. It's uh, I think it will. Be very helpful, even if it's not followed in the standard way every single day, it will at least. Add a little more organization as things start moving faster and maybe there are days where John's not here. Which will be very, very, very rare, but. Um, where we can just jump right in on the tickets.
Mm hmm. Yeah, uh, one of the things I was thinking about doing is since I have my Fathom on all the time. Is uh, after we get off the calls and stuff, I can pull the. Transcripts and summaries and take that kind of stuff and put it in.
Sure that will help, but it's also one you gotta be careful with because it can. I don't know how accurate it is. I don't read those very often. You see them all the time. Like, how close do you think it gets?
Pretty close. I use it uh, for board meetings with her hive for trying to keep summaries and stuff and it's pretty good. It, yeah, like there's some stuff that is important that gets missed. So it's definitely something you have to like look at and be conscious in the meetings and still like. Kind of take notes to be like, okay, we're this far into the call, so I'll make a note of that or I press a button thing like. Hey, this is important that we're talking about and make sure to capture that.
Yeah, I just wouldn't want like a ticket that a developer is working on to have. You know, the wrong.
Yeah.
Instruction there. But um, it'll be super helpful to have those because. I think like just personally, I'm finding myself jumping out of here much earlier to work on. Different things and I miss a lot and then I would like to be able to catch up.
Mm hmm.
I've been able, the uh, the recordings that Johnny is doing for us, um, when he sends those to us. Um, there's transcripts built into them. Um. And I've been using those uh, transcripts and putting them in a ChatGPT to. To organize and come up with the, the top, the topics and that were talked about during the meeting. Does, does a pretty good job of it. They give me a summary of the meetings.
That's really cool and you know, what's really cool about that is uh. At some point when, when the coding. Jumps to the next level with AI because it's getting better and better. Because we're recording these standups, we will be able to train. An AI very quickly on a lot of how we do things. Like some of the contextual understandings that don't just live in the code. It'll have access to. We'll be able to give it the code base, but then some context around it because it's following. Everyone's line of thinking.
Right.
And we'll be able to take this team, add some AI to it and have like a, a very scalable engineering team. I'm, I'm getting a little hopeful here. I think it's coming. I don't know for sure, but. Jerry, you almost ready for your big day?
Yeah, uh, I think we're procrastinating, but uh. Stuff out the way. I'm probably gonna, probably gonna take Friday and wrap up at any one last second, but. Yeah, get close.
Yeah, yeah. Lisa's out running around right now because of it. She's got three days of things to do now.
Whoops.
Uh, it's stuff like uh, getting the dogs shots for boarding and all that stuff, you know?
Yeah. Gotcha, yeah. Yeah, my parents, when they, when they gotta go somewhere, they just leave me with the dogs. They're like, oh, you work from home, here's our dogs, three dogs that are used to.
Funny.
They wanna bother me all day. I'm like, oh man, I can't just put y'all outside. I don't have a fence. Yeah, my parents use me for the easy way out, so they're not stuck around doing all that.
Nice. I don't know if I want to start without John because I have not been a part of recent conversations. But it looks like we've got everybody here except for Ismail.
Which Ismail's out, so Ismail's not gonna. He won't be in standup.
Oh, yeah. Me, I forgot. Oh, hang on a sec.
But I think uh, Amit, is, is Sarav gonna be, did you hear anything from Sarav? Is Sarav gonna be trying to start?
No, no, he will be joined from the first of June.
Right, next week.
Next week.
Do you know if he talked to John yet?
No, I haven't talked to John yet, but like we need to sit limiting with him, so I'm uh, I'm talking, talking to him for the, his ability.
Okay, yeah, he uh, I think John was wanting to hear from him before first, though.
Yes, yes, yes. And uh, Jerry, uh, I talked with that person who is a core iOS and Android developer.
Hmm.
He's also ready to work like you told me you can use him for widget, so he can also talk with us.
Okay, yeah, we might, might wanna wait to John about that. So Dan, are you up to date with um, with Sarav coming back next week?
Yeah, it's great news.
Cool, yeah.
Yeah, that's uh, I was really happy to hear that. It was funny, John and I both kind of thought of it at the same time in the office the other day. And uh, I was gonna reach out to him, well, to Amit, myself, and then John beat me to it. So, that's good. He's uh, familiar with the project. He's really, really good on the front end. It'll give some additional help here.
Yep. Another thing is Amit has a friend that's a native developer who could help us with widget.
Oh, nice. Nice, that's awesome. Um, oh man, I've got some ideas for that widget too, especially with this nightlife thing we're doing with photos and tagging and all that. How hard, Jerry, do you think it would be at some point? And maybe, maybe it's a question for you, maybe it's a front end question, but to have uh. Uh, like a little tagging feature pop up on photos, like where you can click on someone's face and tag them with a name and number.
Um. Name and number, hmm.
So like, you know, Facebook does it now, right? You can.
Hmm.
Click on someone and like say who it is, or maybe they used to. I don't know if they still have it anymore. They've reached their critical mass, but they used to. You could type, type, ugh, you could type in someone's email. Um. Or their name and then Facebook would find the email. What we want to do is. Click on people's pictures and have it say like, who is this? And you type in their name and their number. And it'll fire off an SMS.
You're tagging? Like tagging that way shouldn't be so bad, um. It, it's gonna take probably more work on the front end. Just to make sure that the tags are laid out right. Cause I mean, all the backend's gonna be tracking is like XY and a name. Whereas the front end's gonna have to make sure that that XY stays consistent and, for example, like on Facebook, you can. Drag a pin if you like clicked on the wrong spot, make sure all that's done right.
Cool. And then uh. Were you? Playing around with the landing page yesterday for the nightlife chat?
Uh, I was not playing around with the landing page, but uh, was talking to Todd and Ian, they were testing out a flow code for it.
Okay. Yeah, I think towards the end of the night, John showed me that we had the flow code coming from the Circles buddy. And it was working. Um, we're going to. Try something starting tomorrow. We're making flyers right now where we have a photographer show up at one of the, the nightlife venues and take photos of people. Um, the photographer's gonna take two photos and then. We're gonna have the user scan a QR code, enter in their phone number. And we're gonna give them a flyer with the QR code in case they don't scan it in real time, so they can do it the next day. And then we're gonna upload all the photos the next day into. A photos topic in the nightlife chat.
Mm hmm.
And we're gonna want to SMS everybody and say you've been spotted in a photo. And have them click it and have it deep link them into. The guest list nine one six chat under the photos topic.
Hmm.
So, um, I can work with you offline, but we need to figure out how we're gonna send out that SMS and embed the deep link and everything.
Yeah, like it sounds like it, this is, but is this going to be to, I'm assuming if we're SMSing, it's not going to be to Circles users. How, how are we collecting those numbers?
If you're a user. Well, now we're gonna collect the numbers because the photographer is gonna have them scan the QR code in real time and enter their phone number to be notified.
This is not our landing page. This is gonna be the photographer's doing the landing page?
Um, we're gonna have a flow code hooked up, so it'll be, it'll be our landing page.
Well, if it's our landing page, then they'll just get dropped in the app.
They will if they go through downloading it that night, but if they, if they don't download it, like let's say they. Type in their phone number, but they don't go through the full download process then in there. Then we're gonna want to. SMS them still to remind them to download it the next day, to remind them they have a photo in the app.
Okay, yeah, so I think that should be pretty darn easy, let me think. I think I'm tracking group key. Yes, I am. Yeah, that's, that's gonna be pretty darn easy.
Fantastic. All right, well, we'll dive into that.
Yeah, I could do it now if you give me the content of the SMS, basically.
Okay. Very good. I'll, I'll slack you.
Hmm.
And uh. Don's in now, so Amit, you wanna kick it off?
Yes, I will start, start. Uh, like you sent me duplicate print set card, it's happening, correct? Uh, so I debug it and found we are getting uh, two cards for the, from the database. I talked with Jerry, it is happening due to user unfollow and follow again, so it is two events, so two times card is creating that's why. Jerry can tell more about it.
Okay, yeah, so we have blocks in place in case this happens like within thirty seconds of like unfollowing and re-following. But um, this happened, I think a minute and fifteen seconds apart. So that's why a duplicate card was created because it was past our threshold for preventing duplicates.
Okay, so if you want to see, I will say at the screen, I will show you the example, John.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah. Each. You can see this, uh, we are getting two cards for uh. Ettura Oswald. So you can timestamp, you can see timestamp is two uh, minute, more than two minute difference here, each created time.
I thought we had different methods for handling this. What was the actual cause of having the duplicate card? Was it, was it a follow, unfollow and then re-follow?
Right, that's not, that's why the ears, but we have, we have protections in here, John. We only have protections up to thirty seconds, though. This happened a minute and a half apart.
Okay, and that was the cause of both of the ones that I had sent?
Yes.
Okay.
Then after, uh, you sent me one more problem, a streak is not redirecting to you, the streak is, so I fixed that one also. The notification, stick burning on did not navigate me to a stick as console. I have fixed that one.
Okay, you told me last week that you'd fix that one.
No, not, not for me. This is a new, it was from a new simple.
Didn't we talk about that one last week?
Last week was, I will tell you what it was. This one, this one, last week we created rot and fixed it, so it was, we could watch one minute. This one last week it watched it, cost time. Check out which what is standing in your category.
Not one navigates now?
Yes.
Okay, um, I think we talked about the streak screen too, didn't?
No, 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 not a stick screen.
We have a situation because there wasn't a dynamic link to it, or what was?
So this one only not cautious, because Ismail created a link, a stack for us. In the treatment screen.
Okay, is that live in production now?
Uh, so app side can tell us. It is from the backend side, it is, temp, temperature changes, it is live and app side, I mean, can tell us.
Okay, who do you, how do you wanna verify that? And then as far as the streak?
Uh, that day we sent notification to Amin itself.
Hmm. Are we talking about like the entertainment notification?
Yes, yes.
So that's in QA, but not in production.
Uh huh. Um. Okay.
And third thing I worked on here, I have.
One sec, one sec. Todd, have you gotten a um, notification on one of the test phones? And tested it to go to the entertainment category as it should? Something like that there.
I may have got a notification, but I haven't tested it yet. It's out of time when I'm looking at.
Yeah.
Okay, I can test it.
Oh, I need to test all these notifications and. Make sure they're all routing properly in QA and then also production. So currently this is not deployed. To production, but I'm not even sure if it worked in QA. And then the streak one, uh, same deal. And Jerry, you do recall. That that one needed a dynamic link, right?
Yeah, I, I, I don't think those are in like production yet either.
Uh. Um. Okay.
John, like any new deep link or dynamic link, we require a new build because we have to do front end changes as well. So, yeah, it, uh, backend changes is not enough, like we need frontend change, so they both like um, communicating the deep link correctly. And backend adds a deep link, we need a new build to, to have it there.
Right, so at the best we can test it in QA.
Yeah, right now we can test only the entertainment search because that's the ones in QA, not the streak.
Okay, we talked about the streak last week, right, Jerry?
Yeah, yeah, we talked about it and it was not implemented it, I guess until today. From the uh, from, from the backend, so it's gonna be same for uh, front end, so.
Are you sure you didn't implement that last week? I thought you did it during standup.
No, I did not. I took a note of it because it was not ready by the backend. Like I need the backend send notification to work on it.
Uh, okay. And Amit, you hadn't done it until last night, till today?
Today we have, we update, I ask Amin, you can see here, he has given me this link and we updated it.
When did you do the backend?
Today, today, today.
Something got lost in communication because we talked about it last week.
No, I, you did not talk about me. You sent me it yesterday night, so John, you can see it.
I sent it again yesterday, not the first time.
No, I think we will go, let, let's go.
You and, you and Todd are working on creating a uh, framework? For all these notifications, right? Where I wanna have, I want you two to be. Um, in charge of this, so this stuff doesn't get me, I, you know, I, I have a lot to keep. Track of. And um. I need to offload some of this stuff, but I find myself repeating here and I don't sure if you guys are organized on this. And doing it yourselves, but I really need you. To take this off my plate so I can focus on the other thing. This one is its own world. The notifications. So Amit and Todd, do you, do you guys recall the whole streak notification thing?
I, I recall it. Do you mean as far as it being implemented?
Both being, yeah, it was supposed to be implemented at least from the backend and then. The frontend still had to do their part. So I mean, are you able to do that within like just a few minutes here in standup so we don't forget?
Um, yeah, I can do it right now.
Okay, let's just get it, let's get it knocked out.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So Amit, we did talk about it last week, but it got overlooked.
John, I don't remember, can we talk about last week?
That's okay, Jerry remembers. I remember. These, these notifications are important because. They apply to our new user experience.
Click notification, so John, you sent me message, I remember, I did not see any message regarding a streak.
Yeah.
Probably talked about it in the standup, that's.
Yeah.
That's how I remember it.
Yeah, I had, I think I have a screenshot of it that I brought up and. Amit, you said you took care of it. It wasn't necessarily that I slacked you, I just, we, we looked it up. I think Jerry confirmed it needed a dynamic link. Um, I mean, that one wasn't one of the ones that we had already done uh, upfront, so I was gonna take the front end. I recall the whole conversation. But. Amit, you didn't go forward with it.
Right, we have missed it.
It's not a problem. It's done now, but again, these um, notifications are. Very critical to the first contact with new users. If they don't work, they're kind of pointless. So. That's why I wanna make sure these are working perfectly.
Yes.
Okay, so what else?
Third thing here, I worked inside the business, sorry, profile details, we added new field. Uh, business status, it's closed or open to uh, calculate open or close based on this business hour. So that is a complete, uh, computer and deploy, create a pull request for it. But this business hour is not coming always in uh, this format, so Jerry, you can see it here. So I handle all the possible cases, so we need test.
What kind of other format would business hours come in? And so are we doing our own calculation? Is that what I heard?
Yes, we are doing our own calculation. So what you can see here, we are getting like hours.
Yeah, so let me ask a question. It's based on the business location, not the user location, right?
Yes, just look at some based on the business latitude and longitude.
Okay.
Yeah, we found a, we found an offline library, John, so it doesn't, so we would have to call Google API and get charged every time to check the current business status.
Hmm.
So um, this is a much faster approach because we already know where the business is and like all time zones are stacked. We know where every time zone is. So we have a library that can take the location, convert it to a time zone, and then we take the business hours in that time zone. And we convert it to is the business open or not.
Okay, lovely. I think we're gonna have Wells implement this and it's gonna say open now in green or closed in red.
So if you will see here, I will call the API or uh, text to you.
Okay, so is this deployed to QA?
I created a pull request, uh, waiting for you.
Yeah, I merged it.
Um, would I see anything or still hardcoded?
Oh, did it not merge? Okay, well, yeah, we're merging it now, but yeah, I don't think. We might wanna check with Wells on that and see if he's referencing a field on the frontend right now, but it might be hardcoded to true.
Hey, Wells.
Oh, Wells, I don't think I really know he used. Well, let's meet him.
Yeah, please, please drop a message, Amit.
Yeah, lem, you. Yeah, you, you took a look at that Wells, remember the hours where it says open or closed?
You sure?
Um, is that, is that still hardcoded on the frontend?
Um, I believe you're getting that from the backend, it, it is just from the, as an array of strings.
Wait, what, what is an array of string? We're talking about the, like, just the.
The open now, or the, the, the opening hours, the opening hours is coming from backend, the open now, I think it's just a string.
Yeah, open now, where is that coming from? That's, that's the question.
That's coming from nowhere, it's just a text.
It's just, it's fixed, it's static?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's what we need to know, so Amit's gonna send you the field that you're gonna have to update to pull from, open now.
I sent it to you.
So let's, uh, let's see if that is able to adjust the, uh, open or closed.
So backend will return you business status, if it is closed, it turn you closed, if it is open, it will turn you open. Wells?
Uh, yes, I meant, sorry, I didn't.
Back can we determine if business, uh, has open hour, it will return you open, if it is, it can close hour, it will return you closed.
Okay, okay, so it is not, that's true, I get it.
Well, yeah, that's a promise.
Yeah, can you, can you please send me also in the chat, the name of the query, so I can easily find it on the code?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Amit, what else do you have going on?
Uh, so yeah, that's it for today.
Okay, have you provided all the notification information to Todd, so he can map everything?
Uh, not yet.
Come on, Amit, please.
Yeah, so it's almost ready, I will send it to him, yeah, but like today, I started working this.
Okay, not that many notifications, we need those, otherwise, like I said, we're, it's pointless that what we're doing, you know, counterproductive.
We already sent him all the notification details, just need to add new field recipient, who is the recipient there, that thing is missing.
Yeah, I just need, I would like to know, with all these notifications, who the intended recipients are as part of testing.
Everything is there, all is pending, John.
Yeah, obviously needs to know who is receiving and the timeframes, do you have, do you have the, um, the templates for when they're triggered?
Yes, like in, in one signal?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, there may be some that are not on templates as well, right, Amit, or there's some that are outside of the.
Chat notifications are not in the, uh, uh, one.
Yeah, that's one.
So what do we find in those?
Well, obviously, like, like encrypted chat messages wouldn't be there, but I think there might be notifications like someone joined a group.
Right.
No, some, join the group data is also coming from the backend, this is not from the template, once new template.
Yeah, that's, that's, that as an example, that would be one, not on the template.
Right. So we need a list of those as well.
Every notification, Amit.
Okay.
Everyone, all of them, all, every single one, sometimes, I see some weird ones sometimes, and I don't know where they came from. Because they didn't come from me, so I want, I want to know every single possible notification that could be sent from our project. Yeah, Tori sent me a screenshot of one she got yesterday that was new, it said, um, RSVP. I, I vaguely recall doing that one, but I don't think it was being set in the rotation, something, I think something we fixed last week. Yeah, someone had RSVP to an event she created. And Todd, then there's a, there's also notifications for business owners?
Right.
Um, so if you pay for a subscription, um, and then you get favorites, I believe there's notifications around that.
Yeah, I think some of those are, they're in one, in, in, in one signal as well. So I have them there in templates.
And then I don't know about the email templates too, but.
There are email templates in there as well.
Yeah, I wanna make sure those are all triggering properly, getting sensitive owners and all that.
Yep.
Okay, cool. Uh, okay, so, is that it, Amit?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. Alright, Jerry, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, got some good stuff done, um, I got the frontend going, that's done for the, uh, the feedback core flow. So the business owner can see all their, their core responses. Um, I also went through and I updated the feed, the discover feed with all the proper, which you call uh, thumbnail sizes, not for the profiles though. Profiles, like the profile images are staying the full resolution, uh, and the trust tips, just because of the, uh, what we might be doing with, with what Wells is working on. Uh, let's check my notes, yeah, I got a couple things I sent to Wells for, I, I asked him to change out a couple URLs for image optimization, that there are some URLs that were hardcoded in the app. And they weren't using an optimized URL, or they could have been, so I sent him the places to update to do that. I also have, uh, for our chat admin, I noticed that our chat admin is not in the app, because I think Amin hit it in production builds on purpose. I went ahead and gave him a field to look at in a query to show and hide the chat admin for the user when, when looking at a group detail, so start actually using that chat admin. So, got a lot of stuff wrapped up then, uh.
Tell, tell me a little bit more about the chat admin. Um. Yeah, I wasn't quite following that, you said it, um.
The, the web view that I was building out?
Yeah.
Right now in production builds, it's just hidden.
Right.
So, we, I have.
Button in the, in there that says like manage.
Right, managed group, so because hidden right now, uh, we need something to control whether or not it shows up, like, you know, is, is the person designated administrator of the group?
Yeah, okay, so if I go to one, oh yeah, I see managed group in QA.
Right, right, but not in production.
Yeah, when I tapped on it, it said error, you don't have permission to access this organization.
And, yeah, that's probably because you made admin of it.
Yeah, I didn't create that group, but, um, are we gonna hide it for non-admins? Because like, I don't need to see.
That's what I worked on, so, what I'm working on, is what I did work on, is I gave him a field that's a Boolean, just to show and hide it.
Okay.
And it, it depends on the user that's viewing it, so they'll always see the button if they're an admin.
Okay, good, um, in case of an error, um, how do I go back? Let me try, let me create a group chat, um. Not sure which ones I have created, let me see.
A web view in production environments. Um, I do not know exactly how it's working in the latest QA builds.
What about production?
We've been testing the web view in the production environment.
Okay.
Uh, just because that's where we have groups, so we can test, and it works with external chat. So if there is something weird that happens in QA, it, it likely isn't happening in production. But, uh, we haven't been able to test in production lately, because there's no way to view the button. Yeah, I just tested.
Something different, I'll bring it up in a second, kids, go ahead and continue.
Yeah. Uh, it looks like the admin's loading in QA.
Let me, yeah, let me create a group chat and see what happens.
Yeah, you'll have you on your test phone, your test phone isn't an admin, so.
Yeah, that's true, but it will be now. Okay, brought up the web view. Um, so I basically have two, boy, this is, this cannot be the design that we came up with. Um, has Shontel seen this?
I don't know.
Members, manage members, topics, manage topics, and then like, it's just how, how about I'll share my screen, one sec? Let me share my screen also, because I wanted to show a different bug, I think it might be backend, I'm not positive, one sec. Here you are. No, not you. Okay, one second, I'm coming in. Okay, so, you guys see my screen, right? So, this could be possibly the worst screen I've ever seen.
Yeah, that's not the way I have it looking. Um, because I wouldn't just have those two things for starters, um, yeah, so that's not my design.
Yeah, I, I figured it wasn't.
Yeah, I, I gave them the design, maybe I will follow up with IOD with that and.
Okay, yeah, we, yeah, we work directly with them to.
Yeah.
Isn't this what Jerry was just saying? We're just, um, we're not showing everything on the frontend that he built?
No, no, this is, this is it, this is what is built right now, Ian.
Oh.
Have you seen this yet, Ian? Because this is.
Yeah, yeah, I have seen this, I thought that we were still waiting to add more.
Well, I think we, I think IOD is, has not, um, put any real effort into the, uh.
Can we see the design? Because this is the design I saw lacking the other top, the other eat, like, there's things not there yet, but I thought this was.
Yeah, yeah, that's for sure, there's definitely things missing.
We don't need to say members, manage members, and topics, manage topics, and this kind of way, like, I don't know, is, is one of these a button?
Yeah.
And then what, what can you consider, because I looked at it and managed topics was, was, it's like a dropdown, but it only
Yeah.
be hidden if there are no topics. A lot of conditional logic that has to be built into the interface. But still, I'll, um.
Oh, what I would do here, like, this doesn't look like there's anything I can interact with.
Right, it should have more buttons.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
I asked on the, I asked on the managed topics, and the managed topics could show that it's a dropdown. And, yeah, managed members should at least have an arrow or something like a Chevron saying that.
Yeah.
Points to it.
That's true. I had that.
You don't need both.
Had that, and then all design.
You know, you could just have one, you don't need, um, all both, like, for instance, if, where I just came from, here, we have members, we don't have two things for members.
Correct.
No, you just have the one with your Chevron, like, is that what we're going for?
Uh, I was assuming like, like, hide the big blue members.
Yeah, I mean, this is nice and compact, it's pretty straightforward, like.
Yeah, okay, so.
Yeah, you're right, I, I definitely should make that more obvious, I feel like at one point I had the arrows and it could go down, but I think that eventually we decided to make it more where you can click it, and it would take you to a different screen.
So what's the difference between manage and members?
Actually, we have different, um, functions among these topics.
Yes.
So, but why don't we have them now? Why do we just have manage? Um, versus member settings and topic settings and.
So with manage, it's, so it's two different things, so one is manage members, which, um, you can manage, you know, warning them, muting them, that kind of thing. And then you can have settings, like, being able to change them into a, uh, admin. Um, who gets to change what things, like, if people can, um.
Screen, various.
There we go. So if you wanna have like, a message for new members, this is kind of where it, we were talking about having like a summary or something like that. So you can choose if you wanna have that or not, um, if you want individual people to be able to create custom topics, because maybe you don't. Um, or create events, you know, like, what streaming doesn't need?
Okay, that's, that's, that's not clear, the, the create custom topics isn't clear that you're only allowed, like, who am I allowing to create them? So maybe it should say allow anyone?
Okay.
Some topics?
Okay.
Or even just the header could say allow anyone to, and then with a colon pointing to these three things.
Uh, yeah, that's a good idea.
Except the enable public link wouldn't be there, that would maybe be above all that.
Well, we don't even need public link, public link is on, on the app side of it.
Yeah, that's true, I can take that part off.
Does it hurt to have it? It's, it's one of those things, it's good to have everywhere.
That's kind of where I was at, I remember when I was designing that, it's like, we can kind of have it in a lot of places, because I think it's gonna get used a lot, so why not?
It does, and it, it's working really well, I would put it at the top, actually, just because.
Okay.
Um, and we don't say enable public.
Yeah.
Point link, we say.
Do we wanna do a reset, though?
Reset, maybe it should have like a bunch of warnings.
Yeah, modal after you hit reset?
Yeah, like.
Yeah, and I think I, I do, yeah, I have a modal for that. And then I have a modal for if it's not valid anymore, so it's the admin reset it.
Good, that, that's important, okay. Ian, if you, you've been working on this, did, was this clear to you, or did you not really take a close look at this?
Not, I haven't gotten any, any detail on this, my under, my understanding where I left off talking to IOD about it was that we integrated these functions for us to use internally for now, while there was more still being built. Even, I, I think IOD was under the impression that the designs weren't all done, but that might have been false.
Don't tell, did he think designs weren't all done?
Um.
I think he knew they were done, right? I think I've heard that already, Jerry, that he just hasn't gotten to everything.
That's my understanding.
Is this live in the app?
No, no.
This is just in beta, okay.
You, you, well, you can access some of it through the screen I was just sharing, not this.
Not IOD's screen at all, though, right, yeah, right, like the manage, the buttons that we're saying weren't clear armed buttons, that's, we can't see that yet, right?
You can in QA.
Got it, but, yeah, okay, so we're not.
It's technically live in production, but the bu- button is hidden from.
Oh, okay, okay, good to know, um, I didn't know that's where we were at in the process.
Yeah, but if you take a look at this, you'll see that it wasn't clear, like the create custom topic.
Yeah.
I can look at all this stuff, it just, it just takes away from everything else I'm trying to, I'm, I'm trying to focus on the new users more than anything.
The, well, uh, just as a kind of general concept, uh, that I'm still a little confused about. We have two different places that there's going to be management, which is okay, but I think there's like a little bit of overlap occurring right now.
Well, yeah, so hold that thought for one second, Shontel, that should say allow anyone to.
Okay.
That could be a little bit shorter. There we go, so now, so now, now I understand if I'm allowing anyone to create custom topics. Um, this almost button, it's maybe not clear. The most clear is what we did with that toggle, where it says everyone or friends, remember, or like map list, like that's tog type, type of toggle buttons, I think this is probably clear enough. I mean, I would presume that if I say no, that I still can create them, but it's not super clear, like, the most clear would say, who create, who can create custom topics, and then it's like, anyone is one of the sides of the slider, and then the other side is only me.
Okay.
There are only admins, that would be the most clear.
Okay, yeah, I like that idea.
Yeah, it probably better always be like the most possible clear you can be.
Jerry, do we have endpoints for those toggles?
For the toggles, um, for which ones, like the?
Like the one she was just showing, that's why I think we were under the impression we weren't ready to design some of these pages.
I don't know, because IOD has never asked me, basically the way it works, he's like, works on the frontend, and he's like, okay, I'm plugging in the backend with this. What do I need to put in the backend? What do I need to put back in? And then I provide him what he needs, so.
Okay.
Cuz I haven't heard from him.
So chances are those toggles don't exist yet.
Right.
Okay.
Like you said.
That's fine, that's fine. I just wanted to have an understanding of it. Um, that makes sense to me.
But I don't think he's even touched any of these screens. Right?
Sorry?
Uh, well, he's done some. I mean, obviously, he's done what you've seen so far.
Not not these, though. This set, this whole, there's a little big flow here that she was just showing.
Yeah, sorry, I was I was trying to find that toggle. Where was that toggle at?
But just the ones we were looking at, that like the, you were just modifying the text for it, and there were two toggle switches underneath it.
Yeah, that whole thing is under a topics, or not topics. Or yeah, that is. Um, no, for the, are you talking about the slider? That was above um where you can pause and silence notifications.
Notifications, so that would be, okay, yeah, yeah, chat.
By the way, next week, he's gonna be back to a point where I'm gonna try to basically give him circles work all week. I've had him on other projects for like the last, well. Pretty much entire, like, week and a half.
Okay.
That could also be why I haven't heard from him much.
Yeah, I just, I thought that he took a pause when he thought he hit it. Oh, I'll find out. I'll I'll find out what the reason is, but then. We'll um. Go over these designs together. I'll have him pull it up.
He was making, he made some changes, yes, he asked me to, not not the chat admin. What was it? Let me see what he asked me to.
There was a website. We added a button to the website was all.
Yeah, speaking of, speaking of the the store button, um, I wanted to bring that up. The the store button just looks so out of place.
It does, but at least it's there.
Yeah, there. I didn't know if there, if that was intended, it just. Looked different.
Oh, it broke. I mean, it's working, but a part of it isn't working as intended.
Yeah, that doesn't surprise me. I I would pretty much count on every time we implement something, it will not work on the first try. That's like just a rule of thumb. So test everything thoroughly. Don't be surprised that, I mean, it happens every day on on standup, you know, Ismail will be like, okay, let me show you, and he's like, wait, that's not supposed to happen. Uh, why is that happening? You know, it happens every day. So these screens here, Ian, I don't think IOD's even seen these.
Yeah, it's cached. Uh, yeah, you could be right. There's a component, I mean, there's some that I know he has seen.
Well, yeah, he did.
I I know that like last year, we did a full tour, but that was. Literally like a year ago, so.
So he's been ready for a long time.
Yeah. Who will have access to?
Or maybe just um. Allow, who who will you allow to? Um. Actually, you know, you don't even need the header. Like, create custom topics, if it says like, only me or anyone, like, that's tells you everything. So like, you're like, create custom topics and be like, anyone, only me, or only admins. Or just in it, maybe you want the header to say who can. But this would be, this is where we need a set of eyes, maybe Todd or Ian or Ari, or somebody other than me, where we can. Really just look at it and say to yourself, do I understand what I'm doing?
Right.
Don't understand what you're doing, then it needs, then you need to change.
Yeah, that's kinda what I was gonna get at um a minute ago. Uh, just the general concept of having two different management things, and there's there's over uh management um.
Oh, yeah.
Areas.
Yeah, where did you?
Well, there's some overlap happening, it seems. Um, and it's just.
Supposed to be only admin access. Um, where's the other one, like a more broad one you're saying?
Yeah, it's the one that we've uh put the muting, like pausing notifications, and I love that one.
Hey, so I'm telling, let me, so will you stop sharing so I can go back to sharing?
Yes, sorry.
So you're talking about this screen right here, Ian?
Hmm.
Did it stop sharing one second? Three, two, one. This one, right?
Yeah, I love this. I like the design. It's intuitive, compact, love it.
This is some, this is management for everyone, but then there's the manage.
Which I get. I get the general concept is, I mean, for me, I personally understand it. I think we understand it. But when we add this other administrative portal, currently, the titling of that portal itself um seems to be pretty, you know, managed chat. What, it doesn't really tell me that I'm a administrator, that there's any diff, like, it just seems like there's two different places that you can do. Management without really any clear distinction between the two.
Yeah.
Is that what that button is? Is is that, so that button will take you to the web version?
Yeah, that's.
So may, could we, could we maybe distinguish it as a higher level of, because that's not gonna be visible to everybody?
Right, maybe admin access.
And may maybe it will make sense to people, and I'm overthinking it. Um, yeah, I don't know. I mean, my my thought is that it would be something like administrative group management or something along those lines, and you would see that same title. When you go to the web version.
What about admin settings?
That makes sense to me.
Pretty clear, yeah.
Is that friendly to the average person? I like that.
Well, it's only gonna be the admin.
True.
Yeah. So I think that works. Admin settings, do we want an icon? It's the only one without, I guess there's two without icon.
Would it be group admin settings to be more clear?
Yeah, and then I could do, since a settings thing, maybe I could do like a gear or something. And then lead chat do like a open door if someone leaving.
Sure. Yeah, or even just like uh. Like uh, like something like that, I don't know.
Mm hmm.
But yeah, probably open, if you had a good open door icon. Um.
With regards to the general design of um the web view, I I agree with you, John. It's not pretty. Uh, you can see how close IOD's version is to the designs. Um, this is, this is nothing compared to the quality of that previous page, though. I'd really like to mirror this design.
Okay.
We should, at least with the functionality, like the members is just one line.
Yeah, totally agree.
Here. Members, two lines, you know.
Mm hmm. Yeah, and the and and obviously, you can see kind of, you can even tell what happened here is, he has that um curvature, the radius on the top of the manage members button, but not the bottom with the intention. That there will be another button beneath it.
Yeah.
Uh, which would have matched the design, but I agree, a compact design would be much cleaner.
It's just like, there's just all this extra space.
Yeah, yeah, that's obviously.
Weird, like, this is like way too close right here, and um, we're not using our font, you know, this is not our font.
Ooh, and can we? Is that a problem?
Yeah, we do, for instance, if I were to go to this web view.
Yeah, our font's a Google font.
It is a Google font, okay.
But here's our way, this is a way.
Obviously, we can then. Okay, cool.
Yeah. Okay. Web view, so um, I have some more questions here. Um, did we? Whatever. Just the one I did? Yeah. This one. Um. Did we finish everything here? Who who do we wanna designate to go go over those screens? Todd or Ian?
I'll take it. Yeah, I'll take it. Um, I'll go through them with IOD, and when 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 we decide the time to to rebuild it. He's gonna finish up a couple tasks today, so at minimum today, we'll be able to get the process going. Just kinda start on it, and then we'll be able to dedicate basically his entire week next week to more web development. So any remaining screens, I'd imagine we could see through to completion, so long as he doesn't get hung up on functions. That said, uh, Jerry, if time permits, prior to that, do you have access to the designs to know what? Things he's going to ask for, that way when the, when he's ready to implement them, we can just link the endpoints right then, rather than having to have you build them? I guess it doesn't matter. We can, you could build them after, too. It would just delay the final production. He's just gonna be available for it later.
I usually, I can get it, I can get it, talk pretty quick.
Cool. Um, and then as far as the features in included in that page, um, in those designs, maybe Chantel, if you don't mind bringing that back up again. We can just talk through what we want him to actually. Build. There there's, there is a good amount that's already there.
Give me one second, I actually stopped sharing. Um, but. Uh, there was one question at first, and then we'll look at it. This should be quick. This is either for Amin or Jerry. If I hit the plus chat button, I am in QA. And now it's not gonna do it. Um. Damn it, I knew that was gonna happen.
What?
Let me try this. It had already. Um, names here. Oh, look, by the way, test is there.
That's both of those, that that would be for an end.
That's for an end. Hey, I mean, this keeps happening.
Yeah, we still haven't worked on it. Like, I remember Ismail was uh trying to fix it, it was not fixed, but like, we didn't got the chance.
No, he, he fixed it in the sense of. He tried to find any place where it could happen. I think it didn't, it's. And it's not like the root cause fix, but at least it was, I think it.
I'm not, I'm not sure he did, like. I mean, maybe this happened, I guess, like three weeks or something like that, but I don't remember if you wanna PR, that has something like that. Maybe he worked on it, so it's just on his.
Like, can you start the convo flows, remember?
Okay, but yeah, uh, whether it works on or not, it seems it's not really fixed, because.
Well, maybe not here. You know, like, I think he fixed it a lot of screens, but not, for some reason, not this one.
Okay, oh, yeah, it's it's on my to do list to.
Okay.
This issue again, I.
I think it's gone now, too, like.
Yeah.
All I did was just close it and reopen. Um, well, that's not what I was trying to ask about anyway. I was, when I came here, let me try it again. When I came here for the first time. This is the newest build. I hit the plus chat.
I think the reason.
Um, it's the plus group. Sorry, this is what's happening. For some reason, it's starting with D. Is that just cuz like those are my, these are the people that followed, or?
Is this like the issue you were trying to show, like?
Yeah, maybe this is actually normal. This is a test phone, and I'm not following a lot of people.
I mean, those um. Wait, so you're doing groups, and this is what we get from the initial query.
Yeah, but I think, I think this is actually. The people I'm following. I'm not following a lot of, I'm following twenty.
I mean, yeah, we're calling a query there to show some, just so, I don't remember the query that we. Do there, but that's, that would be the response we give in. And it seems you don't have anyone there that starts with A.
But I do. Look, I mean, yeah.
Okay, let me check the query that we're doing there to to verify where where that list is coming from.
Okay. Okay, so, did you want Chantel to share, Ian?
Uh, real quick, before she does, actually, would you mind going back into that uh web view and looking at a couple of the things that are built, so we could just talk about function real quick? Um, there's a couple of features in there that we haven't really discussed. We we went through them behind the scenes, so manage members, we'll start with that. Um, and then click on, so there's an export feature. I can't remember the need for this, but that allows you to email a list of all of the users. That's, I think, only visible to admins. As far as I understand, that's something, Jerry, maybe you can confirm that export button would only appear for admins, meaning like circle staff, right?
Correct.
Okay, cool. Uh, and then if you click on a user, so like Danny fourteen oh six, for example.
This is so far away from our designs.
Is it?
Yeah.
We do we, uh, we can look at that in a sec.
Cuz there's no way like this. I don't know, like, what is this? I don't even, how does this work? I mean, like, look at this tiny little button, this tiny little button. Like, what does that do?
That's probably, that's probably HTML native.
Tap on it. I don't know if those work.
Yeah, like, those probably don't work.
Are these part of your design, Chantel?
Nope, I've I've never seen this.
Like, stuff, this, this is where eng- engineers.
Wait a minute.
Are not designers like.
Yeah, truly, that that's what what we're looking at right now. Uh, well, except for I don't know what has any tag is. The design of that, I would have signed off on, just to be transparent. I I thought that that was clear.
Oh, boy. You've used the app, like, this is a departure.
Uh, it's not, yeah, I mean, I get it. We're in an, we're in an administrative area. I kinda thought that a more um. Mechanical approach made sense for an area where we're doing. Betting changes and administrative functions, but I I mean, I get what you're saying. This is.
I don't even know what any, like, I don't know if I click on active only. I don't know what that means. What what's a active only what? What does it mean?
Okay.
You know, and.
I mean, yeah, the answer.
I wouldn't even know, this is expandable like that, like um. I've never seen a menu like this. Like, I've seen like sort, you know, like.
Fair.
Um. Yeah. And then, does it need to say user? Like, are, is there, could it be something other than a user?
I don't know why it says that. I don't know if that was a part of the design, and there are people who are not users, like if they're managers.
External chat would be the other one.
Ah, external.
That makes sense.
So, that's not clear. Um, I don't know what this is. Um, I don't know what anything is on here. I don't know why there's all these buttons. What is this? What are those?
Those would be paid pages.
But like, I don't know, I mean.
Okay.
Keep in mind, I'm I'm your average user.
Hey, I get it. Yeah, I'm, I I, I totally understand, like, and everything that you're saying makes perfect sense. I'm looking at this from a very mechanical state, and I I get where your concern is, and it's totally valid. I just. Unfortunately, don't think I have that same immediate. You know, like, I I like having a sort makes perfect sense. You know, like, I'm in agreement with you. I just don't know that I would have caught those things. I looked at this, and I was like, hey, that's pretty good. This catches the shit that I would wanna see as an administrator.
I don't need sort from Z to A. We don't need, there's just no value in that. It's just extra buttons.
Okay.
If it's alphabetical, it's alphabetical. If I want to search, I can search. Um. These, these buttons here. These are unnecessary. How many pages are we gonna have? And even if we did.
Well, yeah.
We got the search, you know, like, we don't, it's just, it's again a departure. From the simplistic functionality we try and maintain throughout, and adding, and even if we did use these. This, I've never seen it at the top. I would normally see it like down here at the bottom, right?
Yeah, we're, the bottom thing is a little complicated because of, you you know how the bottom of phones are. I think that was part of the reason why.
Therefore, we don't need it, don't need that. I would want a way better menu than that.
Oh, okay, yeah, my design for like the. Like, older version, when we're designing it for um. For sororities and stuff, it has a drawer, not like that, like.
Where?
When you click on, so at the top, I have like a little filters button.
That makes more sense. I've seen those before.
Yeah, when you click on it, a drawer comes up, and you can select it. Um, I have it off of. Um.
And then you would get.
Check-ins, messages, credits, because, no, I don't have it like that.
Would you get this menu here in the drawer? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, the the things in there would be in the drawer, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But I didn't have those ones, so.
Cuz like, it's default at active only, or maybe not. I guess it's defaulted all members.
Yeah.
But like, it's not even really like a header, like. I guess this is meant to relate to that. That's not even really clear. Why, why, how would I assume that that's what is providing my list here? How do, it's not. The drawer idea I get because you bring up, you have filters, and then you bring up. Um, how you wanna see. But even that, I wanna, I would wanna make sure. It's clear that I'm sorting this list. So there probably should be a header. So if there was a drawer. Let's say, and the header said. Um, sort list, maybe? Or just sort, like, in any, like, is that, is that, or am I filtering? I guess I'm filtering?
Yeah.
Not really filtering, right? I don't know, can I choose?
Yeah, yeah, it's a filter. It would be a filter cuz it's singular.
Yep. But could I choose more than one?
No, it doesn't look like it. I don't believe so. I believe that this is an individual selection field.
Cause filters you can choose more than one. So sort is, you can only choose one. So I would say probably sort the list cuz if I, if I'm choosing filters, I'm thinking, well, cuz you're filtering, you're going down, filtering more and more down. Each time you select one. So then. Do we want it to be filters? Do we want to be able to choose more than one?
The word, the word filter from a um, technical standpoint is the correct word to use, even if you can only select one from a like. System software, but I get what you're saying. Yeah, I mean, if that, if it seems to be more intuitive to say sort, that's fine. It's either one, I think, is logical.
Unless we want to allow multiple choices.
That's not necessary.
Don't need the word only. Like, cuz it's a filter.
Right.
I could be here for a while.
Okay, well, yeah, this that's tough, man, because I, like I said, I look at this page and my my eyes.
Maybe you should get Todd also to assist me.
I was gonna say, I I'm, this is where my vision, John, is uh. Limited compared to yours in this way because you're more of a. I would say a typical user. And what I'm seeing here makes perfect sense to me. And I, and liking and I understand exactly what you're saying now that you mentioned it. It may not be as clear to average.
Chantel then, cuz I think if Chantel looked at this, she'd be confused by what's happening. So, um, and she's worked with our designs for a long time.
Right, right.
I I wouldn't say that I'd be confused on this because it's very similar to other group chat admin. Type things.
I mean, I get it. John's making good points, you know.
No, I I'm totally with you, totally with you. It's just, I'm I'm kind of. In a similar thing where it like, it makes sense to me. I mean, that's not the way I designed it and I wouldn't. Arrows.
Yeah, like, would you know this A to Z?
Yeah, absolutely. That's so standard.
But it's um. There's a list of four, so it's like. It's so out of place. Why am I sorting four names and?
Well, if you had a hundred and twenty, though.
Sure, but you don't need to sort. I mean, it is sorted. It's alphabetical. I've never, I've never thought to myself, oh, if only this was from Z to A.
God, I do that every single day.
And so do I. I do it all the time.
So you look at a list of names in your, like, oh, I wish this was Z to A.
Yeah, or or American backwards order or sort of like symbols first. I do that constantly.
When you have a search bar at your fingertips?
Wha- what if I know like?
Yeah.
Let let's say I know there's.
Interesting because like in my contacts, this is an Apple product. I can't sort this by Z to A.
Yeah, and I think that it's fine for the intention of picking a name of someone I know and doing a call, but when I have a list.
How else would you find the name if you don't know who you're?
Well, let's say I don't know how to spell the name, but I know it starts with the or it starts with a.
I would end this debate by saying, if if Apple didn't put it on here, we don't need to put it on.
Apple's not administering a member list.
This is my list of contacts.
Yeah, but that's, you're not managing a list of.
If I need to get a name out of here, I mean, there could be lots more functions, right?
I I I could, I could argue heavily on the other end of that, but I I'll defer to you, man. Like, you have, you're making, you're making really good points. I I don't have a problem.
Don't take my word for it. I I use Apple as inspiration. They have a lot more engineers and seasoned designers than we do. So, uh, when in doubt, I look at their designs, you know? And I try and keep it simple. They're known for their simplicity of design. They're not as good as they used to be, but. That's like their whole ethos is simple design, intuitive, simple design, bait, like less is more. So. Yeah, I just uh.
I I don't, I don't wanna add to, add to it, but uh, iOS nineteen, they're saying they're gonna totally redo the design, so.
Be- because they drifted from their simplistic design and.
That that I do agree with. They fucked up, like the swipe up from the top left or the top right and you get different menus is so opposite of intuitive. It, like, I get it now cuz I use it all the time, but it is, that was a terrible decision.
They really, they moved away from what they.
That's that's what I'm saying, John. I I I'm in agreement with like all of the commentary that you're making. I just lack the the sight that you have. And 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 maybe part of it too is that you are looking at it fresh for the first time in a while as well. Uh, but I totally agree. Like, we could use that little message thing under Johnny's name. I have no idea why that's there. And I I'm sure that there's a good use for it. Like, if you use this manage screen often, having things like icons can be helpful. Um, and shortcuts for sorting or whatever, those things can be helpful if you really are moderating and managing like a a list of users. Right, but there should be like a key. Yeah, I I'm in agreement with you. Like, it's not, it's not crystal clear. But that said, this is a very mechanical place. And so I I'm, I've been looking at it through that filter. Of like, this is a mechanical function type area that we're in.
Still, it's still our our run-of-the-mill users who wanna create group chats, like Danny Danny's wife is gonna. Create some group chats and administer them. Um, she's, you know, has some different groups around um, her custom, her plants, her exotic plants and stuff like that. As a, as a standard user. We want her to thrive. She's not, she's not a web developer. She has no technical experience at all. So this has to be intuitive for her and many like her. Um, there, that's, she's like our model client going forward. Uh, we want to, we want a very inviting experience for that admin. If I come here as an admin to this or what, you know, we've been working with or their admin portal for business owners that paid for their subscription. And it's, it's not intuitive. It's like, I just wasted my money of if if I spent money on it. Or this could be discouraging to where it's like. Why bother?
Just to be clear, I don't think there's any need for you to convince us of the importance of the changes. I think we're all in agreement with you.
Yeah.
We're all, yeah, all in agreement. Um, if you can.
Run it by Lisa, have her.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, well, so I already, I'm taking some notes on the things that you said and we'll make the adjustments. And then when we get to a point where I feel like, all right, well, let's see.
I would like, I'd like her to be our beta tester as soon as you have a functional. I mean, I know it is functional right now, but it's not available in production yet. We could probably get her on test flight. I don't know what that would entail.
I don't necessarily even need to, I mean, I could theoretically just show her the images too as a starting point, say, okay, what do you think that these things do on the screen?
More ideal that it's actually interactive because that way she can click through and go like, what am I looking at? What is this? I don't know what this means. It has any tag. What does that mean?
Okay, yeah.
The thing is, she's not gonna certainly know this stuff I'm I'm reporting here of like. This is more just an eye for it, like, you don't need that.
Okay, well, then it'll be, it'll be a team effort.
Don't do that. Anything you can get rid of, like, I don't think you need that, or if you do, you be, it needs to be more clear. Um, like what? And I don't even think it needs to be user, like, I think if anything, if you wanna designate someone who's not a user, you could say they're external. But you don't need to call everybody a user because there's only two possibilities. So, you see what I mean, like. This external would stand out because it would be the only one where it says external. Versus now you just added user for no good reason cuz like almost everybody's.
Yeah, makes sense.
You know, this, there's a lot of things like that. Uh, I can, I can stay on.
Is this all gonna be a web-based thing or is it gonna be a app in app?
This is all web, so the changes are, it's super easy.
Yeah, I I mean, I can help. It's just, I gotta find, I mean, we already burned up a lot of time here and there's so much I wanna get to.
Can I get two more minutes and you just tap on one of those users and tell me what you also don't like? So I can have some direction on the next page. Cuz that'll, I can, everything that you just listed, we can have done in like fifteen minutes. So.
So this is pretty straightforward, except why is this pretty much the same as that?
Oh, that is a good question. I have no idea why both of those are even there.
Okay, so I do know the top ban that bans them from the group.
Look, it's not clear.
Of course not. I thought that that was a duplicate.
Well, okay, the bottom ban is only visible to circles admins and that's like to ban them from the circles app as a poll.
Okay, so.
Users in anybody that's not us won't see that bottom.
Okay.
So we can log into anyone's group chat?
Was, uh, yeah, so circles admins can moderate any group chat.
Okay, but not private ones, right? We, or you have some designation that shows that they're public. Versus private. I mean, no, yeah, we should not be able to go into somebody's private group chat.
Definitely not.
Yep, and we're we're just, well, your only way you're gonna be able to access this is if you're in the group already.
True.
John, um, if you. Say that anyway, what is what self policing?
But you can only access this if you're in the group. So I suppose you're, if you're in the group, it's no longer private to you.
Right, right, you're a component. But that said, like, if Chantel gets added to a a small group of friends. She shouldn't necessarily be able to wield her power as an employee in that small group.
Yeah.
I mean, we can ha, if if it's just.
I don't feel like that's a privacy issue at that point, though, cuz she's been invited to the group.
Well, it's not, yeah, I mean, that's a good point.
Security issue, like if we had someone go rogue.
That's true, but they're the only people who I think have that access are at most the people on this call, right? There's no one outside of our group.
No.
Well, then, yeah, I guess we don't need to do anything else. I mean, I get it would be known by anybody that I interact with or that Chantel interacts with that we're staff of circles and have access to things other people don't.
Yeah, now this seems kind of similar to me.
Yeah, so I'm actually really curious to know. I didn't like this either and it was in the design because I'm also not crystal clear on the sep. I mean, I know now, but I wasn't crystal clear on the separation between the two and I was kind of thinking that an information button might be of help. Like, if you tap on boot, I'm pretty sure.
We just say another line underneath it, like, you know, banned from this group or banned from the app or, you know.
Yeah, that's actually the note I just made. Um, boot would imply that they would be removed from the chat and can come back if they want to. Ban from the chat means that they cannot return to the, to the chat.
And um, what's boot?
Boot just means like that I kicked you out and then you would, you could come back and join it, like.
Why, why is that even an option?
I don't know. I don't know. It was, it was in the design. I, I don't really get it either. Um.
No, I'm trying to think of any time we would want someone to be able to come back in if we.
I I don't, yeah, I don't, I.
When McCullough, like, may maybe you're just having a bad day.
I suppose then that should be a different button, like if you wanna block them for twenty-four hours.
Can you click it, John, and see if it gives you options? Cuz I I vaguely remember like boot for a period of time. Yeah, see that they can rejoin with an invite link. So now, okay, that would. That does actually provide use because if I, if it's my, if it's my kickball team and I boot someone, they can't just show back up. They have to get an invite link to come back in.
I guess.
Right?
I mean, yeah, I'm just trying to think if you'd ever wanna. Okay, I guess it's not really, but yeah, I mean, if you, if you're removing them, like they said, like, hey, can you take me out for a few days?
Yeah, or or like my my team changes every season. So like, we lost three people last season. I would boot all three of them and add new people and keep the chat alive.
Yeah, okay, I don't wanna spend too much more time on this.
Okay, all right, it's fine. I just wanted to get some initial feedback on this so we had some direction too. Cuz like I said, these changes are easy.
It's just not clear.
I'm with you.
Yeah, and more thought, I even like where it says here, no additional notes available. That's a lot of words to say. There's nothing here, like.
I got you.
I don't know. Do we need, should we hide, just hide the field if there's no note? I mean, I don't know what can I tap in here and write notes? So perhaps it should say something more like. Um, start typing, you know, cuz like, uh, by the way, I'm I'm tapping on it and it's not doing anything. I'm assuming I should be able to tap in here and add notes. Like, see how it says add new warning? That's, is that functional? Let's see. Yeah, okay.
Interesting too, I think ma- the majority of our testing uh, initially was just done on computers because that's where it's being built. So. I haven't, I haven't even been able to use this in app yet.
So I'm like kind of blocked here. Obviously, this should probably come up.
Yep, so we, yeah, now that we have this.
Tap in the notes. It doesn't do anything.
Yeah, I, I'd imagine that these are a result of it loading now in the app, which has not been used at all by AIAD yet because. I don't think that he's had a test flight version even tested in.
Yeah, so like, you see how we have here, like, an example, share tip. Like, so it tell, it kind of tells you what you can type.
Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, so maybe something like that versus like no notes, they're like, alright.
Yeah, again, John, I I, this is great conversation, not a waste of time at all because you're looking at this through a totally different filter than I was. You're, you're looking at it from the proper space, which is, it needs to still be user-friendly, even though it's a very administrative, mechanical place.
Yeah. Okay, I don't know why there's a button here that says user. I don't know what that means. Is this a button? I assume it's a button, looks like a button.
That's a badge.
Oh, doesn't do anything.
Yeah, I doesn't. It looks like a button, but.
Yeah, so that's not clear at all why. There's a button here, it doesn't.
A label that we have, basically, indicating that it's a user instead of an external user?
Right, that.
Yeah.
Technically, from from the lens John's looking at, that's not.
I think that if we want to do a designation for an ex, first of all, I don't think we need to say people are users. I think we just need to designate.
If they're.
Someone is not a user, perhaps this is a different color, red, like something that really stands out and it says. Um, external user or something like that.
What about green, like the uh, iOS uh, people who are on Android?
Except green makes me feel like, go, like they're.
Oh, okay.
Red makes me stink, not good.
Okay. Okay.
You know, so. That would stand out if it was red. And then say, I should say external user underneath the name, not way down here, like this is not. That this, there's no association between that button, which is not a button, but looks like a button, and then the name. So.
Got it. Good notes. I will, uh, I've I've gotten everything that you said taken down, so I'll work through these.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it could be something here.
Yeah, I like that. I I like the name in red and then in parentheses next to that external user.
Yeah, it'll prob, might end up wrapping until you let me know.
I would even put in, I mean, I would go as far as to say we could put an i-button next to external user to tap on and indicate, like, an actual. You know, sentence of de- definition of what that even means.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm with you.
I just screwed up a lot of time. I hope. These guys are multitasking. So. I guess we had a question here about. Um, if I create this chat in the group. Now I got another problem.
Where were you just now?
Is there a crash bug here that just happened, Jerry, any of the century?
Yeah, what button did you just click?
I went to chat and then plus groove. I was from, coming, coming from the manager's group.
I see. Okay, yeah, that was one of the changes I made. I mean, this was like unintended for what, um. Uh, let me just make this quick thing and that will be.
It seems like I'm permanently unable to.
Give me, give me like. Ten seconds.
It's not, uh, there's nothing urgent here.
I know, it is, just watch, like.
Okay, um, hey, I mean, did you find out why it was showing the list of those names?
It was, my thinks is what caused the um. Um, because it it was a temporary issue because when I was working, it was exclusive to QA. I was working with the uh. The eleven-digit phones. It's like I mean, onboarded at a time where there was an issue with that phone. Like with saving the phone number, so it like saved him as an account without a phone number. It's fixed now, but uh, that is, he didn't have a phone number and because that query depends on phone numbers. Or it not say it depends on phone numbers, it pulls the phone number. It was doing an inner join and not an outer join. Because you have a phone number, dropped them from there, but now I hit the plus chat.
And plus group?
Plus group.
Okay, there you go. Cool, so now Scott. People I'm following, alright. Okay, cool, thank you. Um, okay, shall we continue? So, um, maybe I mean, since you're, you got the mic. How how are things going for you?
Yeah, um, I've been working on the sync button. Um, like if a, if a user was not allowing contacts or the onboarding, he needs to change his mind in the SOT. Um, that's, um, we will need to take the user back so we can import and fish his conduct. So like, I'm there. It it's um, an issue, there's an issue there that I'm trying to fix. Um, I can't share my screen, uh, I have to go to one more thing, but yeah. So now, if a user, uh, presses that sync button on the SOT, and he toggles the contacts, it will be taken back to the, uh, location, not location, sorry, but like the where he's asked to be, um.
Yeah, the dog running?
Not, yeah, it should be there, but right now it's not there. It's like the screen before.
Yeah, after.
Yeah, where there's like the button and the, you see, like that, uh, the, you see face transition and all of that is there, but like, there's another issue that I'm working on is like, uh, it keeps like, it keeps the user in this loop, so that's, um, what I'm working on. So once it happens, once, the user should exit this flow, so he can continue onboarding as as he should. Um, yeah, that's that's what I'm working on. As far as yesterday. Yeah, we did a build yesterday. I think, uh, I think like Todd got it. He sent a message regarding the, uh.
Yeah, I've been playing with it. The the one I was sharing my screen, that's the new build. It's looking, looking good on iOS.
Mm-hmm, yeah, there's still this issue there, um, here that Todd shares. It seems like weird. I'm afraid like some of the work there, uh, was interfering with, because this is the screen that Wes been working on for small devices. It was like trying to fix this issue, and he fixed it. Now it's in here, so I'm not sure if things are interfering.
Wh- why, what makes you think it's related to what Wells did?
Because Wes worked on this screen to make things not look crowded.
Can you show me where you're talking about?
Oh, yeah.
I can slack, John.
Okay, what was, yeah, what was the problem reported?
Um, it's just the this particular screen is crowded, um, that is, uh, yeah, right here.
Yeah, it's crowded on your, this is your phone?
This is a, one of the test phones. Um, I tested on a few different Android devices. This particular one, this S twenty-one FE.
Uh, you have a lot of problems with the FE.
Yeah, these FEs, um, all do this. The other Androids that I have don't do this.
Yeah, okay, so.
Like, you're saying the nav bar is not there.
Nav bar is, nav bar is there. Right?
Um, on thirty. I put, I I put some notes in development, uh, this morning, um.
So I was like, um, there's. But isn't that the nav that I'm looking at underneath the keyboard?
Yeah, we, yeah, whenever a keyboard shows up, the nav board, the nav bar will come up.
Okay, but that would be confusing, though, if you're saying it's um, during onboard. Okay, yeah, well, I guess just maybe in parentheses, unless.
Yeah, unless keyboard's up.
Okay, Wells, Wells, are you looking at this? Um, did. How come the small screen fixes you applied didn't apply to the Android F FE? That's F is Frank, and E is an elephant. It's like a a cheap Android, I think.
Mm-hmm, um, yeah, actually, the fix I made should soap this, so perhaps.
Um, like, the fix you did, it was relying on, uh, like, the height device.
Here is a a height that is bigger than this MCFix. So a possible, a possible solution for to this would be having the this MCFix be applied to a slightly higher heights, so it will also bring the the bar down for this device.
What do you think, I mean?
Uh, yeah, it's gonna be working, but like, we got, like, what if there's another device that has, because with Android, there's a lot of devices, dimensions and everything, like, what if there's another device now? So so we're gonna we're gonna be having like a, uh, a big if conditions with heights and, uh, static heights.
How would you approach it?
Like, um, if we doing it properly, we would not need to do all this. Things will resize down based on the scale, based on the, um, the dimensions from the beginning, so we would not do that. Like, for example, the circles, uh, mid, like, for example, those circles where you have the the digits, like, um, let's say this is like forty, so it it is forty everywhere. So what we're gonna do is like, have it just kill down based on, um, the device hot, I like the device height, and it's gonna be like, um, relatively to the a device height, so we would we would not have to. Uh, it's like we're gonna go with percentage, um, I'm gonna say like, it's gonna be, um, like, this percentage based on the device dimension, so we don't have to do the guessing work.
I see, so everything that I see on the screen, it's not the keyboard, but everything in the blue would dynamically size based on the phone's screen size?
Not everything, because that will be a lot of work, but at least like the lower.
At least the inputs.
Yeah, the inputs, the buttons.
Okay, but even if those were smaller, yeah, it probably would help, but why is it sitting so high above the keyboard?
Hmm. Um, I will have to look into the code and see what's going on there, like, are we pushing them?
And Todd, do you have a full screen record of that onboarding? Are the buttons always that high above the keyboard when there's a keyboard?
Um, I do have a recording, uh, that means.
I'd like to see where the button sits when you're entering your name and phone number.
Okay, yeah, give me a sec. Or at least a moment.
Okay.
I'll be back.
Was, okay, because, I mean, it isn't this, is this related to, you remember what we were doing with the edit of messages and the and the inputs are like really high above the keyboard?
Um, yeah, it seems like it's pushed the same as the other one, like.
Yeah, I'm on my iPhone, and iPhone's okay, like, uh, the buttons are pretty close to the keyboard.
I fixed that yesterday, um. Well, I have to see what's going on here. I like, are we explicitly pushing it from the bottom ourselves here? Like, are we seeing like, because again, we might see like this is a forty pixel from the bottom. Forty pixel will look good in some devices, but like smaller, medium devices, it will looks like a lot, because uh, it will take much, uh, much more space than it should be. Um, but I will have to.
Why, why are, why are we doing forty pixels?
I I was just giving an example, like, uh.
Why are we even doing any padding? I mean, I guess a little bit makes sense, but like.
Yeah, yeah, I guess the padding, it's there when, like, when it's the keyboard, it's not, uh, shown. It looks good, but that padding needs to um, to be de- uh, decreased when the keyboard's up. I I'm I'm just saying, but let me look to the code, so I may, uh, sure what's going on there.
And and I'm gonna share this screenshot right now in in Slack of inputting the name during onboarding.
Okay, and then also the phone number would be be good, too. I want to see where the buttons sit. I have, oh, sure, it's in the same place when you entered. Uh, how about your birthday with that one?
Yeah, I can get that, too. And give me just a sec. Here's a, here's the name. Let me get the birthday and phone number right back.
Yeah, it sits up really high. But let me see what happened with my name. Yeah, okay, so. Yeah, I'm feeling, uh, when you enter your birthday, the button's gonna be up really high there, too. Wells, did you add any extra padding there?
No, sir. Anything I I did showed, um, call the problem or reflect and and and, uh, barrier devices, all I did was reduce what was there. So if anything would happen after that, it would would like something would be smaller than before, not bigger. All that was part of it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think I know exactly where you have to go.
Mm-hmm.
Let me, I did here.
Alright, I shared in Slack.
Thank you.
Go to navigation dot T X line.
Yeah, like, I'm here. See, this is the changes you did.
Yeah, so for for that screen, if, um, what I believe is happening on that screen is it has margin bottom thirty. If you were fifteen, it wouldn't see like that. Perhaps I should consider also making fifteen for everything, perhaps, because it doesn't look bad in figure devices. It looks better and smaller.
Well, what I want, like, I was trying, what I want to see, like, this spacing, where it's coming from. Is it like just this thirty? Or is it something else? That's what I'm trying to figure out. You could be thinking, this is the margin bottom we're doing here, so it's affecting, but it could be something else adding up to here that we don't know.
Yeah, my my guess there, looking at the picture, is it's the margin bottom thirty.
Okay, and let me, um, like, do you have the, um, let me wait a second, like, do you have the emulator right now with you, so you can run this? To see if you can reproduce it? With the emulator it is working on?
S nine one, yeah, I don't have a a S ten twenty emulator.
Yeah, like, when you were working on this, like, the emulator you were using.
Yeah, I have it on.
Yeah, can you like pull the branch thirty-five? You see this, uh. Send it the name, okay? So pull this branch and go to the onboarding and see whether it's gonna be, uh, used for you there or not.
Chantel, are you, are you working on, um, designs for Ian right now, or ION?
No, actually, I was working on this flyer for Danny.
Oh, yeah, that's, that was, when I was thinking a few minutes back, I knew it was some, okay, um, when you're done with that, um, let me see it, and then I want to go back to the screen we were working on yesterday, that's coming along really nicely with the people finder.
Okay.
Okay, I have it running here and I am onboarding.
Can I repeat that?
I have it running here and I am onboarding.
Um, does it look good for you, like?
Yeah, it looks good for me because of the fix I did, but if I remove the fix, it will look bad. That's why I think that's exactly the issue that's happening there.
Okay, so. Um, let me see if I can reduce this to plus. Yeah, it looks good, it's, uh. And you can see that down the buttons are pushed away, like, all the buttons are.
Yeah, on Android, yeah.
Yeah. Um, I mean, let me see what's going on.
So what, why do you think those are getting pushed up, I mean?
Um, that's what I'm trying to find.
Maybe while he's doing that, Wells, um, can you update me on how things are going for you? Wellington?
So let me get up to date here on this stuff, just a second. Yeah, so the color font update was, uh, the PR was open and approved the merge yesterday, so it should be part of the QA dashboard, so we can see that.
It's looking good. I like that gray font so much better on the feeds. It, I was just showing Tori, too, it looks, yeah, it's so much better. Such a subtle, easy, easy change, but it's nice. Yeah, were you able to work out some of the other places where the colors were getting affected?
Yes, sir. Should be good to go when all the matters. Yes, sir, should be good to go and all the matters. Was was really unconscionable, I think it's good to go.
Okay, so. Yeah, you did, you did get um. A separation. From like what was in the red text, like the notification bubble on the text message icon.
Yes, sir, see, yeah, if you see on the, on the. The notification bubble will be really white, both from the home and in chat, and also for plenty of other stuff, including the. The tabs, so the the. Activity feed, photos, um and 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 the other stuff, it is white.
Those are still white, yeah, okay, cool.
Those are still white, as you requested.
Good, if um, if we wanted the name on the cards, and maybe they are white. But if you look at the, you have a name of the movie or the name of the place is on the bottom of the image. Is that still white? Or is that, I think that would have gone to gray.
The, you mean inside the picture, right?
Yes, on the bottom, bottom of the picture.
That's that's still white, yeah.
That is white.
Yeah, that is, I'm still like.
I just noticed a. Defect, one second, let me. See what's going on with this.
Yeah, and also following up on the updates.
So, okay, but real quick, something's changed. Let me. Send you a screenshot. Maybe it's only the check in, what's that? I'm trying to see what is different here. Well, I'll send you a screenshot while I'm doing this, and you can also investigate, but you'll see here that the miles away. Is now on the image, and it's colliding with the name of the business. Okay, it's sent in Slack. You can see the name of the business on the picture and then the miles away, I thought we put the miles away. Below the image, but I'm actually not even seeing it. I think somehow you brought it back to life, it was missing, it's missing in production. Um, which I didn't even notice. But if you go, if you click into the profile, it does appear under the image. But on the feed cards, it's actually missing from production. And now it's there.
What's done on that at all?
Somehow, I think you maybe inadvertently brought it back, which is fine, um. And we put it below the image. Like, if you click on the image, you'll see that it's below the image on the profile itself.
Mm hmm, yeah.
Could we do the same position on the card?
I think so.
Okay. I don't know how that ended up coming back. Somehow. Something brought it back.
You you're sure it's recent, cuz for me, it was always there.
I'm looking at production right now, and it is not there on places. It's there on the profile, but not the card.
Mm hmm. Perhaps that's something about the refactoring.
What refactoring?
The card refactoring?
But these cards were refactored before the production build, I mean, bill thirty two is in production. So, so it's, it wouldn't be that because then I would see the miles.
Indeed.
So, something brought it back, and are you sure, I think actually, I think the font is not white. On, if you look at the screenshot I sent you. That font is gray now.
The in in, you mean, inside the picture, like.
Yeah, where it says those, those food.
Yeah, those food?
Yeah, it's no longer white, like here, let me send you a screenshot, so and so you believe me also, this is a same uh card.
Uh huh.
And there's no miles away, and also the font is white, so I just sent that one to you in Slack.
Okay, thanks.
Maybe the difference is, one of these is I checked in, and one of these is someone else checked in, is that possible?
Maybe.
Maybe that's possible. Either way, we we don't want the miles away colliding with the name. Maybe you could help me fix that.
Yes, sir, we'll take note of this.
Okay, um. And then, do you see how the font is uh gray?
Hmm, not really.
But compare the two screenshots.
Yeah, I'm I'm doing it, but it looks a hundred percent white to me, I'm double checking right now the the feature. But I think, I think it's impression.
You can, you can put the words side by side, one is white and one is gray.
It might be due to, like, they are different images, different background images, so.
Yeah, except I have, I have both phones in my hand. Uh, one one's in Q A and one's in production, and it's undeniable, like, I would say. One hundred percent, not ninety nine percent, but one hundred percent, it is not white. So. Maybe. It affected it, cuz you said it changed it across the board, right?
Yeah, but in a controlled way, and like, never in the changes I made, like, I touched that part. Cuz I I made sure I wasn't feeling where it shouldn't be and et cetera.
Let me try something, let me turn my brightness all the way up. Perhaps. It certainly gets whiter when I turn the brightness all the way up on my phone. And it's starting to look a lot wider, so you might, you might be right, I might, I might be wrong.
Yeah, perhaps you want to, um.
Yeah.
Draw in Slack in the phone and look into the two pictures in Slack on the same phone.
Hmm, okay, yeah, now that I turned it up, the brightness. Sure got a lot wider.
Yeah, I double checked here, it's a hundred percent white, no changes made on that.
Okay, okay, um. Okay, and that false alarm on that, but the miles away, let's, let's talk about that, that is a defect.
Okay.
I say, I would say, um. We just position it like we would on the profile itself. Below the picture.
Mm hmm.
Would you be able to do that without throwing off all the spacing, you know? For the contacts and everything, not contact categories and all that.
Might be.
Or we could hide it, no, we don't need to hide.
Um, from what I'm seeing here. Um. The text can be or cannot be there, depending on if the place has the distance to show, so perhaps. We conveniently got cards that actually have the miles now.
But interestingly though, when I tap on the ones in production. They have the miles away on the profile, but not on the card, so it's not like we don't have the miles away.
Indeed, indeed. Yeah, that's, that's, that's weird, the last change on that is from Amin eleven months ago. It's wild.
Did he, did he hide it twelve months ago, is that what we did?
Yeah, not sure what is the change, but uh it has here on the log that it was changed eleven months ago.